A call to order the City of Columbus City Council meeting. We will be using the hybrid interactive technology format. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting?
So this is Janet. I will move to approve consent agendas items three through six. But I did make some edits to the four 12 minutes. Most of them were nonsubstantial, but one was not. So I will just let you know what it is in case anybody has any comments. It's on page three, under item number 11. When we were discussing the compromise position or the compromise proposal to Ham Lake, what got left off was them agreeing to striking the requirement for unanimous ratification of the annual budget and also for them to contribute $1,000 towards the additional legal work on the JPA document. So I added that back in. And that also needs to be added to the motion. So my motion would be to approve the consent agenda with those additions.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Are there any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote, starting on this end.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Is there anyone here or online who would like to speak at public open forum? Come up to the table, pull your microphone right up close. Name an address for the record, please.
Lynn Carver Quinn, 7540 152nd Lane Northeast. Not here as planning commission member, here as a resident. I think I need some answers on a couple of things. First off, but I think we need to do a better job as a city when a resident comes forward with an issue. So those that don't know, last Thursday, we got woke up to big banging noise of dump trucks, which at 7:00 in the morning, I looked at the ordinance, 7:00 a.m. is okay. Would have been nice to have a heads up because when your husband's retired, you don't get up at 7:00 a.m. And my dog is a hunter, not gun shy, not shy of 4th of July fireworks. Sat on the couch shaking because our bedroom window is literally not that far, like your desk to the first table from where this happened. I came to City Hall to see if he pulled a permit because it wasn't one, two, three trucks. It was 15, and some of them were piled high with sand. I was told that he, when they looked at the map, he didn't pull a permit. And you need 200 cubic yards before you need a permit. I tend to believe that there is more than that, but whatever. I was told when I showed Carissa on the map where he dumped it that it was put on top of his septic tank, which is underground because he doesn't have a mound. I do personally know somebody that had their well contaminated by a neighbor's well or septic system cracking. My well is not, my property line is not that far. So the house I'm talking about is Garth's old house. My backyard is not that far from the property line. Okay? So who pays if he contaminates my well? And if he told the city he was just bringing in Phil? Well, he has changed the elevation of his backyard immensely. So now my backyard is going to get flooded and my new mound system sits right there. So what damage is he going to do to that? He told the city he brought in 120 cubic yards while 15 dump trucks in sand. I just don't, I don't buy it. But if that's what he told you, I think somebody needs to go out and ask him for a receipt. But he also has a whole lot of scaffolding piled up and a whole bunch of wood. What it looks like today, after a couple of days of leveling and he doesn't even have all the sand spreaded, it looks like he's adding on to the back of the existing unattached garage that is sitting there. And it looks like he's going pretty close to the property line. So as a resident, we don't have an enforcement officer to go out and inspect these things. But if I end up with problems, I want to know who's going to pay for it. I don't want to have to spend money to sue him because a city knew about it and the city has done nothing. But here I am, being a good citizen and letting you know that something is going on. I know you don't want to strong arm anybody, but it would have warranted a visit from somebody to look at it and know that there's more going on than just what I'm telling you. I don't care if he puts up another garage. I really don't care because I have sat and looked at his camper, his boat. He has two of those sheds with the tarps over them. I mean, I look at that. So what's the big deal if I look at another building? That's not the issue. The issue is the damage that could potentially be done to my property. And I won't be happy if there is. So I think as a city, we can't hire somebody fast enough to look at these things. But it was brought and I just feel like somebody should have gone out there because I have pictures from before, I have pictures from last night where the elevation is raised immensely. And if he puts concrete on that, it's all coming in my yard. So just a forewarn that if I have to sue somebody, it's not my dollar because I'm going to be coming to the city to pay for it as well because I made you aware of it.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Come up, yeah, come up to the table, name an address for the record, please, and pull your mic right up close so we can hear it clearly.
My name is Olivia Lefto, and I am the owner of Muddy Paws Play and Stay. Would this be the correct time to address concerns with the Running Aces permit?
No, Mr. Mayor, that would be when that permit is up on the agenda item.
Which is coming up next.
Right. And then it's up to you as the presider to entertain any questions because this is not a public hearing, right? Public hearing was held, was there a public hearing held?
Last Wednesday or the Wednesday before.
So it's at the discretion of the mayor and the council to take further comments. But that would be at the time that item comes up.
Okay. So Olivia, come back in like five minutes.
Okay.
Stay tuned, we'll be right back. So the next, quickly on to number eight, the planning commission report from Janet Haglund, who is the city council liaison at this time. Janet, go ahead.
So I'm reporting on the planning commission meeting from May 3, 2023. There were two public hearings held. The first I'm going to talk about is the special event IUP for Running Aces. The applicant was Brooke Olson and owner Taro Ido. The information's in our packet, pages 1 through 29. As Elizabeth explained last night at our workshop, this special permit was created to allow for partnership between Running Aces and nonprofits. Where Running Aces hosts the event by providing a venue and the nonprofit organizes the actual event. I think this has expanded beyond just nonprofits now, as is indicated in their application. But that was the original genesis of the special event IUP. This will be the third IUP that we would be granting. The first one was in 2012, the second one was in 2017. City staff has confirmed that this has worked well over the years. This process has worked well over the years with few complaints about noise or traffic disruptions. The city and Running Aces has worked well together in reviewing those complaints and planning accordingly to avoid future problems. Events are conducted in accordance with terms and conditions of zoning ordinances and conditions in the Running Aces CUP. By approving the special IUP, we grant the city administrator authority to review and approve each event as proposed. The applicant requested a change to recommendation number 10. Food beverage services for special events would be provided exclusively through Running Aces food catering and alcohol license to include the use of food trucks or other licensed food vendors. Any alcohol is still provided exclusively through the Running Aces alcohol license. That change is reflected in the recommendations in our packet tonight. There was one party testifying in the public hearing, and this was the owners of Muddy Paws. Olivia happens to be here tonight, so we might be hearing more from that. But at that time, their comment during the public hearing was in support of the special use permit and Running Aces' right to host the special events. They wanted to work with Running Aces to provide them adequate notice so that they could inform their clients who would be boarding their dogs during the time of these events. They did not request the city to impose or any separate conditions related to their request. After the public hearing was closed, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the special event IUP for Running Aces. And so with that, we can discuss if there's any questions. I actually have a few questions, so if nobody else does, I can go first or anybody else can go first.
Anyone else have questions before Janet starts?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'll just, as part of the staff report, I'll clarify one other condition if I could. That's why you have, I believe, a handout in the additions. The city attorney's office worked with Aaron Bedesma to also clarify what is a new condition 11 because there was some confusion. 10 and 11 were one condition, and so there was some confusion between food vendors and alcohol vendors. And so as council member Haglund said, food and beverage service would be provided through Running Aces and/or other licensed food vendors. Liquor service, on the other hand, which is condition 11, can only be provided by Running Aces under its license within the licensed premises. And recall that that's inside and then the certain fenced areas that are delineated in their on-sale license. However, if they want to provide, in connection with a special event, if they want to provide liquor service outside of those licensed premises, they can do so by working with a licensed caterer. And that's pretty typical for temporary events that a licensed caterer that has a state caterer's license with alcohol could come in and provide that service. I think at one time, Running Aces actually had that caterer's permit. They may seek to renew that in the future, but in the interim, they could do so with a caterer's permit. So I just wanted to get that into the record. That's the reason you have an addition tonight because we clarified condition 10 and made a new condition 11.
Oh, good, because that was one of my questions.
Thank you, Bill.
There you go.
Okay, so my other question starts on page 22 on our packet, and this was information provided by Running Aces. It has to do with the drive-in movie. I think under location, you have written outside of the live racing season. But I know the one we're talking about for Fall Fest is within your racing season, so I didn't know how you wanted to handle that exception, if you want to just strike that whole part or if we deal with that as an exception and just leave it as is because all the rest of the movie theaters would, movie showings would be outside of the racing season. Our Fall Fest one is, I think, on your last night of racing.
So number three would allow me to do that outside. So minor departures from the activity identified is allowed under number three condition. I'm allowed to, again, when there's small deviations. If there are rather large deviations, it would fall under number six, where I bring it to council. So we can certainly strike it or we can leave it and it would be what I would call a deviation because, yes, you still have to, we still have to go through the permit process even though it's our event.
Yeah, well, and I think my question to Aaron is whether or not he might want to reconsider that or if we're just the exception to the rule and there would never be another situation like that.
Good afternoon, everybody. Aaron Bedesma with Running Aces 15201, Running Aces Boulevard. Just to answer that question, so I believe the intention of that, if you are referring to in the drive-in in location where it says RV parking slash barn lot D, the goal of that one was to say it won't happen in the barn parking lot out within race season. So during the race season, the barn parking lot area D on the map is racing only. The main parking lot, A, B, and C, that could happen during the racing season or any time.
Oh, okay.
So I think the goal of how that one was written was listing those areas and then stating it could be in D, but only if it happens outside of live racing, as in the other ones would happen in live racing.
Okay. So in Frank's memo, and that's kind of where I picked up on it, it makes, it reads as if you're not going to have movies during the racing season, outside of the racing season. So it's up to you guys how you want to fix that or if you don't want to fix it.
Mr. Mayor, council, I think since it's been clarified on the record, we'll have those notes as part of the minutes. And then as the administrator said, she can make that adjustment as necessary for condition number three.
All right. So then my other question is on page 28. This question's for Elizabeth. It's recommendation number two and three. I don't, I don't understand the difference between those two, so help me, help me understand them because it seems like they're saying you have, you have the right to, or you have the, you can approve the special event provided the special event is consistent with the pre-approved description. And then the next thing says that you can include a departure as long as it's consistent with the pre-approved description. So it's like, how can it be a departure if it's consistent with the pre-approved description?
So two and three, two and three run together. Two is basically saying that it has the word shall in it, so that I shall approve the event license. So basically, it's what's saying is I have, I don't have a whole lot of discretion not to approve an event if it's an approved event, meaning, I forget if they're 12 or 13 events, you know, events that you've approved in the interim use permit. The number three is saying, okay, if there's a slight departure, I may approve, you didn't mean, and if you look, the word may is in there, I may approve the event with a slight departure. If I feel that it's too far a departure, then I would go down to six and I would say, you know what, I approve it, but I want to approve it with certain conditions. If they didn't approve with conditions, it would come to the council. So one of them says if it's definitive within the confines and it's exactly what's listed there, I will approve it. The second one is saying, well, if there's slight departures, you can, you didn't mean, you still can approve it, but you have that discretion to say, I don't think so. Number six says if there's, if there's a different event, then they would, then they would have to come to the council because that would be a complete departure, you didn't mean, from the 13 that they have here. However, if it's a big departure, and I kind of gave example last night, to me, a departure is we're closing a road and we have to put different conditions on it. And number six, the way I read it, interpret it is, is I'm allowed to put additional conditions depending on the event. And so the way it was written, that's my understanding, that's how I've applied these before. So if there's any further clarification that we need, then Bill would have to tailor the language to that effect because that's how I've interpreted it before.
Thank you. I mean, I just didn't understand the nuance of that, so that helps. You can decide whether you want to make it clear to those non-legal eagles like me.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and council, again, with that clarification in the record, I'm comfortable with the way it's written. It's worked for 10 years now. So, and have you approved departures?
Slight departures, but not road closures and nothing that wasn't not listed. But we haven't really deviated from the list at all.
I believe we have approved a road closure before with...
The 5K races. And that, but I mean, a completely different event that you didn't list here. I don't think, I don't think we ever departed from the list that you had. But I just want to make clear the way I'm interpreting six. So when Running Aces comes in with an event, you have your standard conditions here. When I evaluate the event, I put different, I put additional conditions on that particular event depending on what zoning issues that come about. So my interpretation is six gives me the authority to do that because I'm putting additional conditions on the permit. And they're usually between, you know, five or six of them, depending if there's tents or if there's different things that each event, each nuance of event would have.
Okay. My other question has to do with number seven, which talks about not using the park-and-ride lot. And I don't know if MTC is ever going to reinstate those bus trips into the cities, but it seems to me that adding a sentence that just says during periods, MTC is operating routes from that lot might clarify that if they're not using, if MTC is not using that lot, would that, you know, would that space then be available to them? And they haven't used it since the pandemic, right? So it's been like two years or three years.
Yeah, I think on page 24, they identify the B, B, which is the park-and-ride parking. So because the application had identified the B parking lot, I think that's why it was included. Again, I'm not sure whether this diagram is used specifically, you didn't mean, but again, the park-and-ride parking lot was identified. But I realize that MTC, you may not, may or may not have that contract again.
So that's up to you whether you want to make that change in here to have that flexibility. But as it reads right now, you wouldn't be able to use that space regardless of whether they're operating routes or not.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and council, I think that would be a good change because if it is, continues to not be used, we would utilize that whether it's for employee overflow parking to accommodate, say on a Friday night, which would be considered a weekday. You know, I think to the earlier point with Elizabeth, adding those different conditions on there has been what, you know, has worked noting some of these slight deviations from what's, what's been on here.
Mr. Mayor and council, yeah, so I've just noted at the end of that sentence, seven, during periods in which the park-and-ride lot isn't used by MTC and I put, or other operators. I don't know that other operators would use it, but just to be a catch-all. So I think when the motion is made, that could be added.
Okay.
It's a helpful clarification.
Okay, and then I just have one last one. Sorry, you guys. I don't know why I caught all these. I wasn't actually looking for them. They just popped out at me. You must have had too much coffee when I read this.
Well, we like it when you read the document, so that's good.
You know, it's the med tech training I had to pick out, you know, discrepancies and stuff. It just, I can't let it go. Anyway, so this is on page 29. It is on condition number 12. It currently says, "The use of existing or supplemental public address system shall be consistent with the original North Metro Harness Initiative facility CUP and shall not be used between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m." However, in the examples, there were two different events, the Halloween hayride and the music, one that on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday goes to midnight. So I wasn't sure if that was a problem because this basically says you have to turn off the lights after 11:00. And if you're having an event that goes till 6:00 or you're taking it down, I'm sorry, until midnight, or you're taking it down until midnight, I'm assuming you need to have lights to do that. So I'm just wondering if that needs to be changed.
Yeah, actually, 10:00 is the nighttime noise standard, but I don't know that, we've never had any reported violations of that standard.
Have you gone to midnight? I thought we were, I thought we were cutting everything off at 11:00.
Mr. Mayor, council, Elizabeth, I think that is, we did go to 11:00 for the sound. I think at one point we did have the lighting for the Halloween event specifically going later. But since that isn't in any near future for us, you know, if that was 11:00, that's fine as well, knowing that that's, we've been operating under the 11:00 to 6:00 parameter and that's worked well for us, knowing that's a pretty hard cutoff.
Okay. And the same is true for the music because the music you have till midnight also on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
I think during the planning commission, it was said that it would be 11:00, right?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the document here, though.
Right, no, same here. That's why I'm kind of confused on that as well.
So, yeah, so this is on page 21 in our packet. It says Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 6:00 p.m. to midnight.
I'm seeing that with regard to setup. Is there, setup of the, is that, is there another area where that?
Well, so it's this, the condition that I'm referring to is about lighting. So I'm thinking if they're setting up or taking down, they need to have lights.
So I think just a point of clarification, we did, you know, I think in the back and forth that we had in 2017 with this was finding that appropriate, the hours of operation. And I believe, in my recollection, was 11:00 during the weekdays and midnight on that Friday, Saturday specifically.
For lighting, but not for sound? Or for both? My only concern, Aaron, is that with the state nighttime noise standards as opposed to lighting, there's a 10:00 cutoff and it goes from, you know, fairly permissive noise standard to much lower noise standard and we have residences nearby. So I don't know if that's, you haven't gotten complaints. This reads 11:00 for both lighting and noise. So I guess to the council member's question, what have you been doing and is it consistent with the conditions?
It is consistent. 11:00 is just fine. You know, even when I look at the music festival on here, I'm not sure which page it is in your packet, but, you know, having it the Friday, Saturday, that's 6:00 to midnight, seeing that on some of those events, we haven't, we've always operated specifically with music, 11:00 p.m. being that hard cutoff. And we've had to tell every music act, we're pulling the plug. There's no, that is a hard, hard turn off. And then with the lights, midnight, we know that's, and we even, on one of our previous shows, we did turn down 90% of the lights and had one left on because it took them till about 2:00 a.m. to finish cleaning up. But we minimized all those lighting. So I think that 11:00, 11:00 p.m. for music is...
Sometimes it's good to be able to blame the city when you've got to get those guys to shut her down.
Yes, and there is no reason to go later. I mean, it's a...
So you can live with 11:00 on both, is what you're saying?
It would be nice to be able to have the lights till midnight, especially specifically on the weekends for any cleanup.
Mr. Mayor and council, are you comfortable with lighting versus sound at midnight?
Yes.
I think so.
And even if I can add, I mean, we're fine with, and it's not full lighting. We don't need to be lighting up the whole racetrack and everything around. It's truly a light pole or two enough where you can see outside.
Okay.
Do you want to make that edit?
Was there any other?
Yeah, I was just curious because I wasn't able to make that meeting, if there was any comments or opposition or anything on this.
So just what I reported, and then I don't know if you want to have, if you want to call on Olivia if she has additional testimony. At the time, they were on Zoom and they were concerned about the noise affecting the dogs that were boarding, but had said that they, you know, they understood that that was Running Aces' right to have events and that if they had adequate notice of the event so that they could kind of warn people who are looking at boarding during that period of time, that that would, that that would be, you know, acceptable to them. But there may be more that she wants to add since that time. There wasn't anybody else that testified that I had.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for Aaron. So as it relates to the noise and decibel levels, it says that...
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for Aaron. So as, as it relates to the noise and, and decibel levels, it says that you'll, you'll work to minimize extreme noise levels or vibration that would have impact on adjoining property or residence. So how are you testing that sort of decibel levels to make sure that that's not affecting our neighbors?
It's, uh, we've had with the bands that have come out, had decibel meters.
Okay.
Just reading the noise and they're operating, I, I don't remember the technical on, on how many it was and where they were at, but they've had different readers in part of their, their setup with their sound crew.
Okay, okay.
The only one that we didn't was when we did fireworks in twenty nineteen, knowing that it was fireworks, and I believe we added a special thing in here, knowing those decibel levels were different. That was the one.
Okay.
That would be separate from, from that.
Okay. So and then, you know, as far as policing goes, security and things like that, are you adding extra staff? Or hiring police officers to be on staff at the cost of Running Aces if anything else was to happen?
That's correct. We, we always work, we currently work with a couple of different added securities. Some of the different events, we've had the, I believe it was Asia Security who works a lot of Excel Center. We've had them for a show. Otherwise, we've had some local additional security agencies come in and supplement some of our staff.
Okay. And then the last question, it's still, it's relating to the noise. So there'd been a neighbor that had reached out to me as well, concerned about those levels and that we'd heard during the planning commission that you were willing to work with those neighbors, or at least it seemed like I was on Zoom listening in. Has anything changed since then as far as any agreements you might've had worked out? It sounded like you were both getting along before that meeting and you were looking to work to a, a common goal.
Correct. We did, we talked a lot. The difficult part was before the meeting, it was ambiguous of how do we work together? What, what does it look like? And one of the things, even talking through it was on our end, everything was led as how do we work together? Is it financial? Do we supplement anything? We did it one time for the fireworks because it wasn't thought of at the time going, oh man, those fireworks are going to go right over where Muddy Paws is. And to compensate them, we paid for whatever loss of business they had to close down for the night.
Okay.
As we look through this, we've had concerts approved and multiple shows. Didn't think having a concert or something like that would necessarily constitute, and we don't want to have to say we're going to pay for any potential loss of business because much like any other business, this, this has worked. We've been doing it since before any, you know, without any issues that the thought was, okay, can we do some other things together? It's not monetary and that's, that's where it was left and there was no more communication to me.
Okay.
So still happy to work with it. We just, there isn't an agreement. There isn't anything specific because we don't know what it'll.
So in the past, it was only on the fireworks occasion that you would have done any kind of like financial reimbursement or loss of, I mean, because me, I bring my dog to that facility. You alluded to it, so I'll just throw it out there. It's a dog facility, right? And I can, I can imagine the high anxiety levels of the animals, right? And they're a neighbor. They're an approved business as well, so we got to work both sides, right? So. Yeah, so hopefully you can do your best to work with them on that.
Yeah, I think for us, I mean, the biggest thing is, you know, if there's a question, don't want all of us and everyone to go, oh, well, there's, there's a loss of business here. There's potential here because there's a 5K and now we're, I lost, you know, I couldn't drive to go to a, my auto shop that way.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's, uh, this has seemed to work. The noise levels haven't been a factor before, minus the fireworks, knowing that's a, a unique event.
Yeah. I know I do live miles north of there, right across the lake, and I can hear when them concerts are going on, just like I can hear Love's when they're Jake breaking and things like that, but. So it is a concern, but I have to, I have to bring it up on behalf of the, the people that brought the concerns forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to make your motion now or should I have Olivia come up?
Uh, I would say have her come up now, I guess.
All right, Olivia, come on back up. Pull your microphone close so we can hear.
Okay. Hi, my name is Olivia Lefto and I'm the owner of Muddy Paws Play and Stay 15120 West Freeway Drive. Obviously, I am present here today to address my concern in regards to this permit for Running Aces as it does impact my business and the safety of the dogs in my facility. Approval of this permit would obligate me to warn my owners, my customers of any time a loud event would be occurring, which in turn would result in a loss of revenue as they would choose to bring their dogs somewhere else or they would choose to just not bring their dogs at all. And again, the overall safety of our dogs would be a risk, which is my number one priority. We tried operating in good faith with Running Aces as mentioned, but we are now turning to the city to address our concerns as our initial agreement with Running Aces is something that was retracted. We did have a discussion before the planning commission meeting and we had agreed to, you know, once the concert is over, we would look at how much revenue we had lost and try to work out something there. Directly after the meeting, I did receive a phone call that, hey, we don't want to have to get into, you know, reimbursing for events that we are permitted to do. As Rob had mentioned, noise levels, I did a little bit of research, so noise levels that are above eighty-five decibels do impact dogs in a negative way, mainly that it induces stress and it can affect their hearing long-term. This type of impact on the dogs in our care is unacceptable to us. And I just wanted to note that I have been in front of you guys before and I, I went through a long process to get my permit and to care for the dogs the way that I'm caring for them now, and I take a lot of pride in that. And we have greatly improved our facility and our standard of care for the dogs. There's been so many renovations. We've really upped just the overall care for our dogs. So even though the events with the noise in the past have not been a problem, it is under new ownership and our level of care is completely different and we have a different standard for, you know, loud events that would affect our dogs. So why give a permit knowing that it impacts our dogs in a negative way? We want the city to ensure that there won't be noise levels above eighty-five decibels reaching our building. So that can be done in two ways, a noise ordinance or making sure that there is reimbursement for revenue loss during these times when noise decibels are above eighty-five. This reimbursement could come from the business that is throwing the concert, or if anyone has any other ideas, they can throw that out as well. But we are now turning to the city as we are unable to reach an agreement with Running Aces. We thought, like I said, we thought we had reached an agreement and would circle back to that, but doesn't sound like that will be happening. So I just wanted to mention that I remember, you know, the concern for my dogs and how important that was for you guys when I was working towards my permit. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone here that the dogs are my main concern for this and just figuring out a way to make sure that the noise isn't fully infringing on my business and the care for my dogs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, let me address a couple of legal questions. First of all, the city would not be advised to require reimbursement for losses. Your job is to make sure the land uses are compatible and we have a good track record for these events. I think the, the appropriate thing to look at is not a noise ordinance because we've always enforced the state. When, when it's been an issue, we've enforced or referenced anyway the state noise standards. So that's why I mentioned that there is a ten o'clock state cutoff and I think it would be appropriate for those noise standards to be in place regardless. That doesn't mean that you can't have an event that goes later than ten, but it can't exceed state noise standards. And that would, that's, that's why I brought that up. That would be the case even if there wasn't a permit. You just simply can't have an activity that, that disrupts those sensitive uses. I don't think it's the city's job to, I mean, the, the facility is on the freeway and the freeway often exceeds eighty-five decibels in that location. That's a fact. So I think the, the appropriate thing here is to incorporate in the conditions that those activities can occur, but in any case, they cannot exceed state noise standards, which protect sensitive land uses. That would be my recommendation because I don't think we want to get into a position where we're mandating two private parties to resolve those differences through monetary compensation. I think that's a bad precedent to set. I don't, I can't think of another situation where we do that in, in conditions of approval because it's a land use matter, not a, not a business mediation matter. So that's, that would be my recommendation to you as a council, but you're free to discuss it and, and come up with our other alternatives.
So it seems that noise is the big thing, but if it does not exceed eighty-five decibels.
What, what's the state standard?
Yeah, what's the state? That's what I was wondering.
I can, I can try and look it up, but again, the, the long history in this community is we've not added to the state noise standards. We've constantly, over twenty-five years, referenced those noise standards. And sometimes we've referenced them in permitting. But let me see if I can look it up and give you an answer. And you're free to discuss it while I do that.
All right. All right, Olivia, you go back here and would you come back up, please? I'll question you a little bit about the noise. But you say you do have noise readers or whatever you call them.
Decibel readers.
Decibel readers when you do have a special event.
Mr. Mayor, that, that is correct. We have in the past, you know, and, and just the quick look on some of those standards. I, you know, I think that after ten or the eighty-five level, the fact that the freeway or anything, you know, a dump truck dropping, I mean, that's. Yeah, I think if there's a limit, you know, and if, if we have to go from eleven to ten o'clock or if there's the different noise ordinance from ten to eleven, you know, I guess I would say that we, we, we've been doing these events and it hasn't been a secret. And to be honest, it was even told by the Muddy Paws landowner, frequents the business, has seen a show, I believe. And when you buy a business knowing that these are things that happen in the community, to then come in and try and stop them or change them seems odd to me.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the, the statutory limits for residential location, so you're, you're near residential with Priner's Preserve is, let's see if I can, for a residential location, sixty-five decibels.
During the day.
L-ten means at least ten, ten percent of the time or ten minutes of the time. And L-fifty at sixty during that, that sensitive period. Actually, and it drops down, at night it drops down at fifty-five. So I, I think it would be appropriate to incorporate reference to the state noise standards. That also may end up creating a situation where the music has to stop at ten. But I, I don't think that, I don't think that the noise standards were intended to protect a commercial business. There, the sensitive land use is the residential, people trying to sleep at night.
Well, and how do you differentiate between what's being generated on the stage and what's being heard half a mile away? I mean, that, that's the part that's hard or what's being heard through a building.
Yeah, the, the reading is intended to be at the sensitive land use, not at the stage. So it's, it's what people hear at their home. It's not that, it, it can be as loud as heck at the stage as long as there's enough distance so that it's diminished by the time it gets to someone's home.
Right. But how do you, how do you enforce that? I mean, that's the part that's, that's hard. I mean, I, I know people who live in Priner's Preserve who love it when they have concerts because they sit out in their backyard with, in their lawn chairs with their margaritas and have a party, listening to free music, right? So that, that's sort of the other.
Do we have the grass, please?
Yeah. That's the other, that's the other side of it. So I, I, but, and I'm sensitive to what Olivia's bringing up, but I also, it's, I'm trying to be realistic about you're having these events. People like the events. They, they like to go to them. And if you monitor the sound on the stage, it's hard to know, you know, you don't have a deci- decibel meter inside of your, your dog kennel, so I don't know what it's sounding like to the dogs in there or what any of the freeway sound is, is like. So then I, it's, it's a question of enforcement, not, not whether it's, it's a legitimate complaint or not.
I, I do think though, referencing the overall, because even if there wasn't a permit, you'd still be required to meet those standards. There's not an exception for your music at eleven or twelve or whatever after ten o'clock. So I think the, at least my continuing recommendation is we make reference to the state nighttime noise standards. That in any case, the music, the, the noise levels will be consistent with state nighttime noise standards. And that at least gives us something very specific. It's measurable. It's objective. If somebody has a complaint, you know, we can employ, they can employ as the permit holder, noise readers, and that's been done.
So if, so, and this is just from my own, my own education. So if somebody complains, let's say somebody complains in Priner's Preserve, they would have to show that the noise was greater than sixty-five or sixty decibels in their backyard. What about?
In their home.
In their home, okay.
The idea is you can't sleep because it's so loud.
So, and, and to Olivia's point, then would she, because she's not in a residential area, what do we do about that concern?
Well, the same standard applies, right? So if we can show that a residential land use is not impacted because the residential protection is sixty-five decibels and drops to fifty-five, well, if we can show that a nearby residence isn't impacted under state noise standards, then the presumption is we're not at eighty-five for the dogs. So, I mean, and, and the, and the kennel operator is free to take those readings and, and demonstrate a complaint. So I think we've got, by referencing those standards, we've got a, a standard that drops significantly at night at ten o'clock and we have something that's measurable. And, and so both the, the residential land use nearby can make a complaint based on that, but also the commercial land use could because if it, if it exceeds eighty-five inside the building with the dogs, that is problematic. So it gives us a tool without, without ending, you know, what's been a successful operation for, is it ten years now, Elizabeth? Have we had two rounds?
This is the third one.
Yeah, third one. Okay. So this, so ten years of history.
So how do we add that to the motion?
I can suggest an amendment to the condition, let me just grab it here, that addresses noise, which is thirteen. We would just say in any case, noise will comply with state nighttime noise standards.
Can you confirm that's for the residential side, correct?
Right. But again, if, if, if somebody's, if you're getting an eighty-five decibel reading inside a kennel, that, you'll, you'll be way beyond the state nighttime, nighttime noise standard. So if, if you're that loud in the kennel, you're going to be at least that loud in nearby residences. So what I'm saying is, even though it's not, the protected use is not the kennel, if you, if you're operating at eighty-five decibels such that you can hear it in the kennel at eighty-five decibels, you're far exceeding what you can do in a residential neighborhood just to the south of you, if you're following my logic.
Technically, yes, I would agree. But the goal is always to angle the speakers in certain areas and we aim them at the building and we try and deflect, you know, that way. We have always traditionally tried to deflect towards the freeway of anything because that's where the most noise is coming from in the city.
Well, now you've got a neighbor who's raised a concern, so I think you'd be, you'd be well advised to not direct the noise at them. I think we're, we're giving you a path, you know, where the permit can still go forward. There's a measurable standard. I think if somebody, if somebody can read eighty-five decibels in that kennel, then that's problematic. And you're going to get complaints and then we're going to be in the middle of trying to rectify those complaints.
And is that for a certain period of time? I mean, if dogs are barking, it's eighty-five decibels. I can tell you that. I mean, if dogs are barking, it's 85 decibels, I can tell you that, in a kennel, especially one that's got a, it's metal. That's, it's a pole barn originally, so it's not going to have the same kind of insulation and noise dampening that a, that a residential home would have.
Mm-hmm.
So my question is, is that over, is it for a certain period of time? I thought, I thought I heard you say two minutes or two-
Right, it is, it is over at least 10 minutes.
Okay.
So if you have a, if you have a loud boom, that's, that usually doesn't qualify.
Okay, got it.
So we can, we can dig deeper into this, but at least at this point, we're referencing the state noise standard, which applies whether we reference it or not.
Right, right, I get that, yep.
Yeah.
Like to do the motion?
So, well, I can try.
All right, with the additions.
So I would move to approve the special interim use permit for Running Aces Casino Hotel and Racetrack at 15201 Running Aces Boulevard, based on the Associate Planner's Report, dated April 28th, and revised on May 5th, 2023, findings of fact 1 through 25, and subject to conditions 1 through 22, listed in the attorney's memo dated May 9th, 2023, with the change that we would also, would we add a condition that would, that would reference the state noise standard, or would that be?
I added a sentence to 13.
Okay.
Which reads, "In any case, the noise will comply with state nighttime noise standards."
Okay, so with that, change to condition number 13, and also the change to recommendation number seven, stating that if the transit lot isn't being used by MTC, that that would be available for use by Running Aces. I think that's the only changes, right?
And the lighting till 12?
Oh, lighting till 12 on, on Friday and Saturday for, for the events as listed in, in the application.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Are there any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote, and I'll start with Rob.
Um, Rob, nay.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you all.
Just so everybody knows about decibel readers, and that we used to enforce it in City Forest Lake, and the police had one, and maybe we can talk to the Sheriff's Department and see if they have one, and that's how we monitor it, but Bill's right, it's a consistent, it isn't like that. And I'm, ma'am, I don't know if they have one, but we used to monitor bars that way for public across the lake and stuff like that, so. The common, they have one of those things, a decibel reader, most departments, so. Yeah, it's, anyway, it's, they, they gave it to the police department because they were non-disposably partial. They took the readings, and you didn't have people coming in saying, "I had this," or what.
Doing it on their cell phone?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, good point, Ron. I've, I've been pulled over on my snowmobile before, and they check decibel readers that way, to see if your snowmobile's too loud and things.
We used to go out and mark a spot in the road, and sit there and wait for the cars to come by.
Yeah.
They work pretty good, so.
All right.
Well, don't, don't be moving on to the next thing, because I still have one more thing on my planning commission report.
Right.
So, the second public hearing was for a conditional use permit for planned unit development, Columbus Industrial Park. Applicants were Marcus Lee and owner John Sawyer on behalf of Brown Beagle LLC. This is a 10.45 acre parcel located on County Road 54, just west of the I-35W and I-35E merge. It's an undeveloped light industrial plot. The plan is to build seven buildings of a total of approximately 69,000 square feet and 150 parking spots in three phases. Development plans include a private road, a parking lot, three stormwater ponds, utilities, landscaping, and a right turn lane improvement to County Road 54. So phase one of the development is expected to start June of 2023 and be completed before the end of the year, and entails construction of two of the easternmost buildings, three stormwater ponds, utility service stubs to all seven building sites, turn lanes, and landscaping around two buildings. Phase two entails three buildings in the middle, and associated landscaping construction is expected in early 2024, but could be earlier if there is a need. And then phase three completes the project with construction of the last two buildings and finish, finishing the road and parking lot landscaping, expected to be started in mid-2024, but again, could be done earlier if there is a need. Each building is intended primarily for storage, warehouse, or, or equipment type use, that would be about 80 to 85% of the square footage, with 15 to 20% as office space. No expected outdoor storage of materials and equipment, other than company vehicles and trailers, would be expected. If a business needs outdoor storage, according to the application, they would need to include this need in their CUP and meet the outdoor storage ordinance for the LI District and describe how they would screen it. There are two residential properties adjacent to this development. The applicant has increased the side setbacks to 21 feet from 10 feet, 10-foot requirement along the southern property border, closest to the neighbors to allow for more room for trees to be planted to screen the business. They also are proposing a six-foot vinyl privacy fence between buildings to screen parking lot and dumpsters from their neighbors. There was one party that testified during the public hearing, and let me see where that is on my notes here. These are neighbors from 13626 Freeway Drive. They testified that their concern about the, their concern was primarily about the ponds being prime mosquito breeding habitat, that would create a nuisance for them, and they also were concerned about the increased traffic and noise generated by this business and the risk of those things to their children. They requested that the city consider these impacts on their property as we review this application. The planning commission closed the public hearing with the right to reopen it, and discussion will continue on their May 17th meeting, so there's no action required by this council tonight, but this is our opportunity to pose any questions to the planning commissioner to staff ahead of this coming back to us for final approval. So.
Any questions, anyone?
I have one, or two, or three. Sorry.
Pick two out of three.
This is what you get for making me the liaison, and me remembering that I actually had to do this report tonight. So Bill, I know that the owner, Brown Beagle, is getting a CUP PUD, and I remember you talking about, like, how do we deal with all these different businesses that will be going in here? And in their paperwork, they referenced that they would need a CUP, but is that correct? That each of the businesses will also have a CUP?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we had a pretty good discussion of this at the recent staff meeting. The, the PUD, which is approved by a CUP, will have the allowed uses, and those uses are as allowed in the district. And then when, and it will also contain very specific standards for limitations on storage, limitations on what can be done inside and outside the building, and any deviation from that would have to come back to the planning commission and the council. So they basically have to comply with all of those requirements and conditions from day one. So the land use is approved, the conditions are approved, and anything that deviates from that comes back to the planning commission and council.
So in their application, where they say they don't expect there to be outdoor storage, but if somebody needs outdoor storage, they'd have to put that in their CUP? How does that, how would that work then? Because they won't, the business won't have a CUP.
They would have to meet whatever the existing regulations are for outdoor, outdoor storage.
And I think that's a, it's a percentage of building, if I remember right, in that district.
Okay.
Buildings are small, they're 10,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So they're allowed over the entire property, that percentage of outdoor storage. They, they would process that administratively as a site plan with, with the staff, and then to the extent that they, someone wanted to go beyond that, they'd have to be in front of the planning commission and you.
And then how, who's held accountable for complying with the conditions? Is it Brown Beagle, or is it the business themselves?
Both. So since the, since the CUP runs with the land, it gets bound up with every user, and Brown Beagle, presuming, you know, that there's a landlord involved, these are tenants rather than owners, is also responsible for enforcement of those conditions. So our expectation is that there's a packet of information that includes the conditions, and that that runs, and even if there isn't a packet of information, there's an obligation on the tenant to understand what kind of conditions are on the property. In our building, for instance, a restaurant couldn't open without a conditional use permit, and the tenant, you know, whether or not they know that, they have to go to City Hall and get a conditional use permit for a restaurant. So, so, you know, our expectation, and, and we can put this into, I can't remember if we were going to draft a development agreement, I think we were in this case.
It's a, it's a master agreement, it's a master agreement. I don't think it was, I don't think it was called that, but I know Dean framed it, that you were going to draft this document. I don't know, I don't remember the name of it, that was going to outline all of the conditions.
Yeah, it would be, it would be like a development agreement, let's just call it that for today's discussion, but in that development agreement, we would include an obligation that every tenant receive a copy of this agreement. So there, there can't be a claim of ignorance, you know? We would say, as part of your leasing activities, we want, this is going to be of record against your property, so we want you to present this to your tenants. And, and that way, they get notice, not only if they review the title, which it would be entitled, but also then have the owner provide that information.
Okay, I mean, that was, that was actually going to be, like, could we require that the tenant has to come in and at least have a meeting with the city, so that they actually are well-informed of what the, what the requirements are? Because I can see, you know, I can see someone throwing a 17-page legal lease document, and they look at it and go, "Yeah, well, whatever," and then throw it, you know, aside. And yes, you can still say that people are accountable for it, but it would be a lot easier to make sure they knew what they were being held accountable for, in that meaning.
Yes.
So, so I, I like-
We actually just, we actually discussed that last Thursday, that there would be a zoning compliance certificate, running with each space.
Oh, great, okay, good. All right, and then, so then there was also some discussion about, they didn't expect there to be subletting, but maybe it could happen, so in that case, now you've got three layers of people. So how do, do we just do the same thing, the same sort of requirement if there's subletting? I mean, and do we put that into the development agreement or your master agreement, so that it's really clear, like, even though you don't expect to do this, we, we recognize that you might have to or choose to, and in that case, this is what you'd have to do if there's, if there was a sublet situation?
We can, we can include tenants and subtenants in the language.
Okay.
I mean, you know, as, as it gets further and further removed from the landlord, sometimes that's hard to police, but-
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with having that same compliance requirement on subtenants. The compliance would likely occur in the instance where they're coming in for a building permit, and so they're altering space, they're, they're building out the space for the first time, or they're, you know, demolishing walls and, and building other walls. If there's no permit activity, it's hard for us to police if a subtenant comes in, but we can make that an obligation in the, in the development, or the master PUD agreement. We'll call it a, you know, something to that effect. So they know that they have legal obligations, and they run not just with the landlord, but with the tenants and the subtenants.
I mean, just as a practical matter, I mean, it, it's nice to know what businesses are operating within the city, and I think, you know, just by having those requirements, at least we know what they've got going on over there, and who the contact people are, and I mean, we, we struggle with that, even with our, you know, our, our CUP holders, so it would be great if we made that a requirement of their tenant agreement, or their subleasing agreement with the tenants, or something, that they need to, you know, self-identify to the city and state, you know, what their business is, and who their contact people are, and things like that. Otherwise, we just, we find ourselves in a situation where nobody knows something's going on in that building, we don't know what that is. That seems like such an odd position for the city to be in.
Yeah, I mean, the, the nice, you know, for the business owner, the nice thing is, and I think the appropriate thing is, there's a CUP that covers the entire property, and as long as they're in compliance with that, and we can prove compliance, then there's not a belabored, you know, process to get tenants in and out. But once we have evidence that there isn't compliance, we have an enforcement mechanism, because they've agreed to provide these conditions to tenants and subtenants, and that's on each and every party that's in that space.
Yep. Then I just have one last question. So regarding the concern that the resident brought up, I, if, if mosquitoes are really their biggest concern, is it simple enough to say that they need to, you know, put the little donuts in their, the mosquito donuts in their stormwater ponds to try to keep the breeding of mosquitoes down in those areas? I mean, I realize that there's bigger, bigger problems, but it seemed to me that the mosquitoes were the ones that they brought up, so it might seem to be a pretty simple and inexpensive condition to put in to address that one simple concern.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I've never heard of that.
Well, that's, that's when mosquito, mosquito control comes around, and, and they go onto properties that have stormwater ponds, I have some, and say, "Can we throw some of those?"
Okay.
They're, I don't, they call them donuts, and they're presumably, like, environmentally safe, and they keep-
But perhaps we could offer a suggestion and not make it a condition? I mean, we've got 50,000 acres of-
Yeah, I know, I know, yes, there's a, there's a zillion acres of wetlands here that mosquitoes are breeding, and including every pot of water and stuff.
And there's no borders on where the mosquitoes can go.
No, but I, I think, I think that there's agencies that will come out and do this, it's just a matter of-
Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I'm a little reluctant on that condition, I think it would be good guidance, but I looked at the engineer, you know, there are standards for building stormwater ponds, and I've never heard that you've got to try and police mosquito production, so I, I'm just a little reluctant without an ordinance and a little bit of study to say that's something we're going to impose as a condition, but I'll leave it to the council.
If we do, can we do something about the wood ticks?
Yeah. God, I wish they, I wish they could.
Well, when we're, when we're working with them, we'll just mention it.
Well, Metropolitan Mosquito Control is who I see driving down my street in the summer times, and the fogging and dropping things into the swamps and stuff like that. I mean, they might be a resource to ask whether or not they just do that on, on request.
I, I used to work for them.
What didn't you do, Ron? My gosh.
That stuff is called a bait, and they get malathioned, and helicopters come around, and I think, I don't, it's an endless war. Not, like you say, the mosquitoes, it's pretty hard to tell where they're hatched out. Carlos Avery's got a ton of them, so I, it's a bait, but you can buy the stuff and throw it in there. I got two ponds, and I check them, and there's skeeters in there.
It was, it was just a thought. I know that there's, there's-
It was a good thought.
... ways to do it, and it's a little bone to throw somebody who's, you know, you can't require them to fence them off or anything like that, but they didn't seem to be worried about the kids falling into the ponds, they only were worried about the mosquitoes.
Again, well, it just offered as a suggestion, not a-
Yeah, I think, I think the road we would go down, if it becomes a condition, then it's legally required, and then someone has a basis to bring a complaint that, that the condition is not being addressed, and then we've got to prove, we're in the, our new compliance officer, if ever, is, you know, chasing down where the-
Where the mosquito came from.
Where the, where the mosquitoes hatch from, so.
Anything else, Janet?
No, I'm done.
Well, we'll end on that happy note.
That's the end of my report, unless anybody else has any other questions for the planning commission or the staff on that one.
Engineer report.
Guess not.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to give a quick update on our West Freeway Drive project. The underground utility construction is essentially complete, so the focus now turns to building the road. So they'll be working on the subgrade and the, and the base work. I don't have an exact estimate for completion at this point, but I would say by, you know, mid-June, it'll, it's going to look like a road, so, so things are progressing quickly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Looking very nice.
Attorney report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, two items this evening. One is the, our recent trip to the Rice Creek Watershed District, and we had two items on a lengthy agenda. The one that I dealt with was the, the request that we specifically made for wetland credits. It was an interesting discussion, I'll just kind of-
It was an interesting discussion, I'll just kind of mind my, my comments a bit. But, the sum total of it was, the minutes did not reflect the portion of the discussion in which, and I, and I can't remember, I'll have to look at my notes to see which commissioner, or I guess they call themselves managers, which manager suggested that we have a discussion over a specific MOU on wetland credits, in light of the long history on this. The, it was clear that the president did not incorporate that in any kind of motion, and basically said we were done with the discussion. So, my suggestion, a staff meeting where we discussed this, was to get the minutes, and then Councilmember Haglund had a copy of the minutes, I read them, and she's absolutely correct, there's, you know, no definitive direction from that meeting. So, my suggestion was to be insistent without being confrontational. So, insistent that there was a discussion, there was no direction given to the staff, without direction to the staff, the issue's not resolved. We expect it to be resolved as a community. Elizabeth pointed out to me that the Forest Lake wetland credits were actually used, or we believe they were used, in connection with the Coney Road eighty-three project. And so, the only party that didn't receive its due at the end of those three projects was the city of Columbus. So, we want to be clear, we want to be insistent, but we want to be, you know, at this point, non-confrontational. In other words, you know, we're looking, we're still looking for action and direction, and it's clear that the staff did not get direction out of that meeting. So, if that, if that is the essence of what you'd like me to communicate, I can do that. Or if there's some other message that you think would be more appropriate, I'm happy to take your direction.
I think that would be fine, anyone else?
I agree with that. And then, what we, what we talked about last week, about maybe coming up with a way that you could actually quantitate the value, that would be left for, for a discussion if they still grant us that? You wouldn't put that in the memo, or would you throw that in there just as a example of a way that we might be able to reach resolution?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think you're correct that that would be good fodder for the discussions. I think if we, if we kind of telegraphed that in our, in our response to the minutes, I'm not sure what, if they'd be less inclined to meet with us or more inclined. You know, so, I absolutely, Councilmember Haglund suggested that we find a way to get to a value that relates to what, what essentially the city gave up, which was tax base from the land that was sold. And I think that's, you know, that's as good of any measure, right? To say, you know, why is it two, or why is it three, or why is it four? The value of that tax base over some period of time is X, the credits are worth Y, and you do the math. And I think that's good, because, you know, we were left making a request for three wetland credits, but what does that relate to? So, I think that's a helpful suggestion, unless you think otherwise, I would save that for an actual sit-down meeting. I mean, we're going to ask to sit down with staff, and we're going to ask the board to give that direction to their staff. I don't know if we have three votes, but hopefully we do. And, you know, hopefully they'll sit down with us and talk about a reasonable response, and a document, finally, that lives beyond everybody's memory.
So, do you need any direction from us, Bill, or?
No, I, I think I-
This is a chart of action?
Right, no, no action is required, direction to the attorney is fine, and I see head nodding, and we'll just go forth and be insistent.
There we go. Legislative initiatives.
Just a continuing update, again, making progress on transportation funding. The Chair Hornstein is a friend of small cities. He has in House File two eight eight seven, he's the author of the omnibus transportation bill, because he chairs the committee. He has an amendment that would create a new Section one seven four point four nine in the statutes. What's different about that is it's not one-time money, as I've said, you know, there's been two or three or four years where there was one-time money, but no, no continuing, you know, requirement to funding. So, what, what Chair Hornstein has in his, his language is not only one-time funding, but a continuous source and dedication of funds to small cities. They are in conference committee, Grady Harn of our office is monitoring that. The Senate language also has one-time funding and continual funding, but at smaller amounts, and the pot of money is less, less robust. And so, we're trying to make sure that the House language is the language that succeeds. And we've had conversations with some of the folks that you met on our day on the Hill, and some other committee members. So, we're continuing to advance that, we, you know, we're really, you know, hopeful and confident that something that will be good on the transportation side will come out of this session. But, we're really after that, that permanent solution, or something like a permanent solution. So, that's the, I was just down there today, and things are wild, the nurses are in the halls, and they're nice folks, but they're, they're occupying every inch of, oh, we got, you got something on your-
Oh, no, I was just covering.
I thought maybe you had a badge on it behalf of the nurses.
I was down there too, not for them.
Okay, but, you know, it's, it's the last, it's less than two weeks to the finish line, and now, now things get really interesting for the next ten, twelve days.
Anything else, Bill?
That's all I have, thank you.
No, I will, just on that, I actually was talking with Nolan West just before I got here, and he said to share with all of you that we need to keep pushing forward on our small-city stuff, and that he'll do his best to help us all, right? So, I apologize, I was a little late here, that's, I was trying to maximize time there, so.
Good.
So, Bill, you'd said that there are, I think, was it seven hundred cities that you were trying to kind of build a coalition with? Is that still the right number, or is this the correct number?
It's, it's about half that, and those cities were engaged by a group that was kind of parallel to ours. Now, I forget, the Capo Rourke has been a long-term champion and advocate for the small cities. So, once we reached out to Capo Rourke and realized that he was providing that information to small cities, we didn't need to duplicate his efforts. But, so we've had that conversation. But, it's, it's probably, in the, in the range of two thousand to five thousand, cities of population of two thousand to five thousand, it was three or four hundred, so a good number, a lot of cities would benefit throughout the state. And then, there's a whole nother tier for townships. So, in the same bill, you've got large cities, you've got small cities funding, and then you've got town, town road funding. So, you know, you've got literally thousands of jurisdictions in the state that are benefited by these two bills.
All right, City Council update, Rob?
So, I just, I'll report on our, the mayor and myself had our fire board meeting this last Thursday, Elizabeth was there as well. So, Councilman Erickson has been put in place for Forest Lake in place of Ben Husnick, Mara Bane, and Jesse will remain, or Mayor Priner will remain in their positions, there was an election held. Mayor Priner will be the Vice President, with Mayor Bane remaining the President. Other than that, our two trucks that had been ordered, they've been pushed back by months only, luckily, at this point. So, expecting those on a fairly good time. An alarming report, there was forty CPR slash full arrests. They said that a good portion of those were from drug overdoses, so that was, that was alarming. The majority of the fire calls that had happened were calls in Forest Lake were three thirty-seven, with Columbus only being a hundred and twenty-seven, which is twenty-six percent, and thirty-one for mutual aid. So, just wanted to share those stats, and, yeah, that's what I got.
Janet?
So, just really quickly, we're still working on the update of the joint powers agreement for the Sunrise River WMO. There is a meeting that's being scheduled currently with the holders of the JPAs, or the representatives from each of the four cities, the attorney that's representing the Sunrise, Inoka County, and Bowser. Hopefully, we'll get that scheduled before June first, and that would be to initiate withdraw from the JPA so that we can reform under the new terms. And, so, what I need from the council tonight is not a formal motion, but basically a show of support for that move, because I have no idea what will happen at that meeting. It may be that Ham Lake beats us to the punch and withdraws, and then none of us have to. It could be that we all withdraw and reform, it could be that we hit some sort of compromise that makes everybody happy, and we go home with our revised JPA. I have no idea, but I think it would, the other two communities, East Bethel and Lynwood's boards have already either passed a motion to say that they intend to withdraw, or they have shown support for that, for that action. And I think it's powerful if all three of us are in the same boat, so that's what I'm looking for, just-
Ready to put a motion forward?
I don't know that we need a formal motion, because I don't know that I'm, it's actually going to come to that, but I'd like to know that everybody's on the same page in this topic.
You know, it was in regards to, sorry, with the-
It's in regards to the fact that we've been in a stalemate with Ham Lake-
Correct, okay.
-for a year and a half or two years, and we've been in this position with them repeatedly over the last, well, at least the five years that I've been on that board. And our current JPA does not have a mechanism to resolve that stalemate. And so, the only way to resolve it going forward is to adopt some new amendments to the JPA. So, the thing that Ham Lake is resistant to is they're resistant to the funding formula change that everybody else is in favor of, and they refuse to ratify the budget if they don't get their way, and so they basically hold everything up. And there's no way to get out of that with the current wording of the JPA.
Yeah, and in the past, they were saying they would just pull out, is that even an option for them, or is it?
It, I mean, they can pull out, but then they have to work with the county to figure out who's going to take over responsibility for that portion of the, of the watershed district, and the county certainly does not want to, but legally, the county would be responsible for it if they didn't, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how this is going to play out, but.
Yeah, thanks for helping me understand.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead, good.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think it would be helpful for Councilmember Haglund if you had a specific motion that is that show of support. So, it would be something like, the council supports the ongoing negotiations with the Sunrise Water, the members of the organization, and including, you know, amendment of the JPA or replacement of the JPA. And that gives you your full range of options in the negotiations. Obviously, anything has to come back here to be approved, but by having a motion, then you have the specific authority of the council to make those negotiations. If that makes sense.
So, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded, any more questions or discussion? So, how long, I have a question, how long do you think it's going to, I mean, so we all agree, three out of the four cities?
We're trying, we're, we've got a calendar going around right now, we're trying to get this meeting set up by the, by the beginning of June. And that meeting is going to be, it's, you know, one of those three things that's going to happen. Either Ham Lake is going to withdraw, and then we can adopt the amendments that we have worked so hard on and be done with it, and they can figure out with the county what they're going to do, or, or we'll come up with some compromise miraculously that we haven't been able to reach over the last year and a half, or the three cities will go back to their council and asks for an intent to withdraw that be formally submitted, and then the attorney will start working on that process. In discussing this with the attorney for this Sunrise, he intends, and this was your suggestion, to do this in parallel so that the amount of time between the termination of the existing JPA and the initiation of a new one would be very short, hopefully just a few days. And he could put language in there that, that limits the termination clause to within a certain period of time of the initiation of the new one. And I think that would allay the concerns of the county and the, and the, and Bowser in terms of like, well, what do we, you know, what do we do while you're sitting here trying to figure this out? It doesn't address the concern of, well, if Ham Lake doesn't decide to join us with these new terms, what do we do with them? But, that's not really our problem to solve, so. So, I think it'll be fairly quick, I mean, we have to give ninety-day notice. So, if we come to a resolution on what we're going to do at that meeting before June first or second, they'll have to be, if we do withdraw, there has to be a ninety-day notice. And so, sometime within that period is when I would expect things to get wrapped up.
For winter.
Hopefully.
All right, I'll call for the vote, Rob?
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you.
Anything else, Janet?
Nope.
Oh, Sue?
I do have something. So, I was at the Forest Lake Cable Commission meeting just prior to this meeting, and they are looking at making a change, but it's at the very beginning conceptual level. So, some circumstances came up where they thought, hmm, would it make sense to actually merge Forest Lake Cable Commission with the city of Forest Lake? And by merging, I mean, like, taking over or incorporating Forest Lake Cable Commission under the city. So, they would become city employees, all the, you know, the bills and all the budget for that would go into the city budget. And, but they said, you know, our services would stay the same, you know, they would take the, all the employees that are employed there now. We would still, the franchise fees would not change. So, nothing would change, except they would be under the city of Forest Lake. Their administrator is doing all of the legwork, the research on how, you know, what would this mean? So, one of the things is that our, our joint powers agreement would be dissolved. So, that's one of the things they're looking at, like, how would we dissolve that? And then, form a new agreement between Columbus and Forest Lake for those services, and how the franchise fees would work, and all of that kind of stuff. So, we were, we're just trying to get feedback, so they were asking like, well, what would Columbus think of that? I'm like, I have no idea, like, I would bring it to, and I asked them, is it okay if I bring it to the meeting? They said yes, and, you know, I'd ask our administrator and lawyer if anybody else had questions about what that would mean. And then, I would bring those back to, to that committee. Now, I, I think one thing that one of the employees was concerned about, and that I hadn't thought of, but if they are under Forest Lake, you know, Columbus kind of loses control over what happens. So, what if, you know, their city council decides, I don't think that we need a cable commission anymore, or something like that, and it gets dissolved, and, you know, changing to maybe utilizing a different organization for those services? And, so, I mean, I guess to me, that would be probably the biggest risk, but I don't know, legal-wise, if there would be a disadvantage to doing that or not.
Would there just be another JPA like there is with the, with the fire department with Forest Lake?
I don't know, there's, you know, we adopted a franchise agreement, and so, the, the cable fees come from cable TV revenue, which is a legislative initiative that was passed in the seventies, you know, to, to create these franchise agreements and to create public television channels. So, L A TV ten belongs to the joint powers, you know, the joint franchise agreement, and then subsequently, they made the joint powers board, so I don't know, Bill, I don't know, I'm not sure how that would work.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it would take some review, I think maybe the way to handle it is to let the administrator go forward and outline what it would look like, because then we'll have something to, to measure against. But, I think I would be concerned, just on behalf of this community, that we don't lose any level of service, any, you know, the kind of service that provides coverage of these meetings over time. You know, what does that look like when it's directly under the city versus a joint enterprise? Because the, you know, the fire department is a joint enterprise of the two communities.
Yep.
And, and so is the cable commission. And so, what happens in terms of autonomy and services, and how do we ensure that happens? I can see a path to that, and particularly since they, the revenue, some portion of the revenue comes from our users versus users within the city of Forest Lake. But, I think it raises a number of questions, to me, the, if the- To me, the, if the administrator's doing the legwork over there, then let them do the legwork, and then we can react to whatever report they come up with, without saying, yes, we're in, or no, we're not.
Sue, was Scandia part of that? Didn't, did they come back?
No.
I mean, they were going to, right?
They didn't. They were, they were going to, they, they exited, and then the cable commission tried to get them back in, and they didn't. But now, Scandia has a new administrator, and they thought the chances of them getting them in would be greater. However, they still use their services, and they do just to pay, pay by whatever, however they use their services. And that's kind of what this would change, too. Like, right now, we get so much free because of whatever they would take a look at and say, okay, for the amount of franchise fees that we're contributing, we would get 10, or 20, or 30, or whatever the number is, that would be free, and then anything beyond that would be paid for each time. So, that was just their thought, you know, that could change, but-
Did, did, in the discussion, was there, what, what's the genesis of this? What started the ball rolling?
Well, I don't want to get into too much detail, because it was a kind of a personal issue with, and it wasn't even, it really had nothing to do with the services. It was, had to do with the budget and how, how they were managed, and, and it wasn't even a budget thing, like, the budget is good, they do audits and all that, but it was-
That's all right. If it's, if it's premature to talk about, I don't want to get-
Yep. And, and it doesn't have any impact on, on our decision.
So, currently, the franchise revenue, the, the agreement is, we contribute 88 percent of the revenue to the cable commission. We only retain 12 percent. So, Scandia retains 100 percent, and they just pay for service. So, that was, you know, there's, so, that's why Wyoming never came in, because the, this particular area is Wyoming, Scandia, Forest Lake, and Columbus in this, and I don't know how they draw the boundaries, they did it years ago, and so currently, that's the formula. Both Forest Lake and Columbus contribute 88 percent of the franchise revenue to the cable commission to fund that entity. So, if we were to opt out, we would keep from the revenue and then pay for service, which is what Scandia did.
Okay. So, I, I will go back with, with that information, so thank you.
Anything, Rob?
No, I have nothing.
Jim? Public Works, sorry. Public Communications Coordinator Report. Connor, are you there?
I am here this evening. Mr. Mayor and City Council, my only report this evening is that the newsletter has been printed, and hopefully is hitting people's mailboxes, fingers crossed, tomorrow and Friday. If you would like a sneak peek at the physical copy, there are actually a few, as you are exiting council chambers tonight, in the wooden display on the wall. So, but you will be getting some in your mailbox very soon.
Rob?
Thank you. Connor, congratulations. That, actually, I looked at the electronic version you sent, and it's really outstanding. Good job.
Yeah, I think it came together really well this year.
Yep. Good job.
Thank you.
City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I have two things on my report. The first one is, I've had several requests to have Monday, July 3rd off, and so I would like to request that we close offices, to close the city offices, so that, that everyone would be able to have that four-day weekend. It just so happens this year, July 4th is on a Tuesday, and there's a lot of people, I think, that are, just really want to get out in that sun to take advantage of the long weekend. It is not a giveaway day, it is a day that they would have to take vacation time. You know, there's, it's not, they're not, we're not asking that it's additional holiday, we're asking just to close the offices, and they would have to use time.
Okay.
I can make that motion. I like, a move to approve closing city offices on Monday, July 3rd, 2023.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Is there any other discussion or questions? So, it's closed on June 30th? I'm sorry, what date did you want to close?
July 3rd.
July 3rd.
It's a Monday.
Okay. So, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, 4th of July is on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? I'll call for the vote. Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
The second item is, last night, we had Julie Eddington come before you. She gave you a presentation about the Dakota County Housing Authority looking for conduit bonding and indicating and asking whether Columbus would like to move forward with that endeavor with them, and last night, it was, the feedback was that we would move forward. I just need a motion of that tonight, so that Julie can, can officially move forward. It's not a motion that you're approving them, it's just a motion that we are moving forward.
Okay.
So, make the motion to approve moving forward with the Dakota County conduit bonding project as described by Julie Eddington, bond attorney. Is there a second?
Janet, I second.
Any other questions or discussions?
What is the fee amount?
The fee would be $75,000. And conduit bonding was for 20, 29 million.
So, this is just a motion to move forward?
This is a motion, just to move forward in order to start the process, indicate then, them that we are willing to, to move forward, but it's not the, it won't, the, it won't, your official approval won't come until the hearing and some other things have to happen, until we actually approve it. But this is a, this is a three-tier housing project with Dakota County for affordable housing in three different categories, along with market rate housing, and I want to say it was 100, 150 units. I'm drawing a blank on how many units it was.
Oh, yeah.
164 units of housing.
That was low-income housing, you said, or just market rate?
There were 50, oh, she didn't give, she didn't give me the breakdown, but there was market rate, what they say, a 60, a 60K AMI and a 50K AMI components for affordable living.
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth.
So, anybody else have a question or anything? I'll call for the vote. Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye.
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't know, maybe you've been apprised of this in your workshop, but we did get notice from the landies of Columbus-
Oh, yeah.
-that they have elected to exercise their 90-day option to continue due diligence. There were a number of items that they need to complete, none of them, you know, terribly significant, but, including some wetland reporting and things that Elizabeth's already provided. We, as staff, pushed back a little bit on a Sixth Amendment, you know, essentially a free extension, stating that at this point, the property had been off the market for eight, over 18 months, and that they could make use of their 90-day extension, which was written in the, the original agreement. They elected to do that, that means the $10,000 earnest money is non-refundable at this point. And so, they get, for that $10,000 being non-refundable, they get 90 more days to put together their investors and all of their entitlements, and then close on the property, hopefully, within that timeframe. I wanted you to be aware of that, in case, you know, there are questions about whether the project's alive going forward. It's still alive, they, they tell us they have investors, and they're getting down to last strokes with entitlements. I think honestly, I'll just speculate, which I don't usually do in public meetings, but I think they're waiting, like everybody else, for the financing markets to stabilize, perhaps with the last Fed action indicating that there might be a pause on interest rate hikes. Maybe that'll be enough to stabilize the financing markets in the next 90 days. So, that's pure speculation, but that's what's going on in that, in that market.
Good. Thank you.
So, 90 days will be June, July, August?
From May, so May, June, July.
Yeah.
Yep, because it was May 2nd was their deadline, and there wasn't an opportunity to get it to you before your workshop and before tonight, and so, since they didn't want that contingency date to expire, they then moved on their own by sending notice to us. We said, the simplest thing to do, rather than have the council debate it, is to just give us a notice, and then you get 90 days.
Well, keep our fingers crossed, we'll have a new road and maybe a new permit.
Yep.
All right. Announcements and reminders. Planning Commission, May 17th at 6:00. City Council, May 24th at 6:00. A joint Planning Commission and City Council at 6:00 on June 7th. By then, it'll be well into summer. So, you know, it's all on the back page, if you'd care to look at that. No, it isn't. Oh, it's on the back page of our original. So, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Moved and seconded, I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned.[1782.62]